At this time, I would like to call to order the January 12, 2020 council meeting to order. And I ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Schenholster?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum present. At this time, I'm going to ask you all to join us in a word of prayer. We know that we're still in an informal mode, so we're not doing our pledge of allegiance. Father God, we thank you for allowing us to connect in another year. Father, 2020 brought its share of heartaches, disappointments, pain, and losses. But oh God, I along with this council, thank you for the opportunity to take on the year of 2021, to be a part of the resolve in this fight of COVID-19, flu, and pneumonia, and the second strand of COVID-19. Oh God, we are believing that every person will be responsible, all responsible, to help slow the spread of COVID-19 to a screeching halt. Continue to cover our nurses, our doctors, EMS, firefighters, police department, and every elected official, from the White House to the local governments. Now, I ask Father, in the name of Jesus, peace be still over our nation, and that you, God, may move over this land. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. Tonight, we don't have any awards and presentations to present. At this time, we're going to have the adoption of the minutes. So the, excuse me, I'm off my script in 2021. You all have received copies of the December 29 call council meeting. Are there any corrections or amendments that need to be made? Hearing nine, is there a motion to adopt the December 29, 2020 call council meeting minutes as official?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Schenholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
The minutes are adopted as official. Next on the agenda, we have two public hearings to consider ordinances that would amend our land development code to allow the special use overlay at 140 North Columbia Street and 301 South Liberty Street. The procedure for conducting these public hearings to amend the land development code will be as follows. Once it has been determined that the public hearing has been properly posted and advertised, the clerk will read the proposed amendment to the land development code. We will then hear a report from the planning and zoning director, including the advisory decision of the planning and zoning commission. Council will then hear from the applicant and anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the amendment. We will then hear from anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the amendment. If anyone speaks in opposition to the amendment, we will give the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal. But the rebuttal must be limited to the points or issues raised by the opposition. Likewise, we will give the opposition an opportunity for rebuttal. Please make sure that before you speak, that you give your name and address for the record as you come up to the podium. The first public hearing is to consider ordinance O-2011-12 that would amend the land development code to allow the special use overlay to be applied to the property addressed as 140 North Columbia Street. Mr. Januzer, our clerk, has this public hearing been properly posted and advertised?
Yes, ma'am, it has been.
I will ask the clerk to please read the ordinance by caption.
An ordinance amended the ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002, known as the Land Development Code of the City of Millisville, Georgia. Ordinance grants a special use for eight residences for the property located at 140 North Columbia Street.
All right, at this time, I will recognize the zoning administrator for a report and the advisory decision of the planning and zoning commission. Ms. Mervin.
You can go to the podium when you got it, ma'am. This ordinance tonight is not to consider the overlay, but to consider a group residence for eight people. Your face sheet does say that for eight people, but I think the agenda just said for the overlay. This property is currently within the overlay, and so he's just asking for eight residents. And the vote on that was a three to one to deny. And there's also a letter which the clerk will read. It's in support of the hearing. He needs to read it into the record.
From Terry-
Any questions? Or, okay.
Ready for me to read into the record?
Yes, please.
From Terry Z. Green, 3608 Sussex Drive Northeast, Millisville, Georgia, to Mervin Griffin, Planning and Zoning, City of Millisville. To whom it may concern, I am writing to you in reference to an overlay request by Mr. Richard Sims at the corner of West Washington Street and South Liberty. I would have been in attendance at the planning and zoning meeting, but I have business that takes me out of state. I am chairman of the Property and Grounds Committee at First Baptist Church, 330 South Liberty Street, where I also serve as a deacon. Over the past 10-plus years, I have developed a good working relationship with Mr. Sims. He currently owns two properties that were previously owned by First Baptist Church. He has renovated three structures in the 300 block of South Liberty Street. When he purchased these structures, they were in disrepair. They were literally ice soars on the verge of being uninhabitable. He and his team did a beautiful job on the renovations of these structures. Since the renovations, they have been well-maintained, and the residents have been good neighbors to our church. In dealings with Mr. Sims, I have found him to be a man of integrity with a passion for restoring and maintaining the historical architecture of the city of Millisville. I speak for myself and for First Baptist Church when I say that we are pleased with all the improvements that Mr. Sims has made in the vicinity of our church. He has proven to be a man of his word when it comes to the renovation of these properties, the maintenance of these properties, and the conduct of the residents of these properties. I want to go on record as being in favor of granting the proposed zoning overlay at the corner of West Washington Street and South Liberty Street. I believe that Mr. Sims' plan for this corner will further enhance the beauty, the neighborhood around the church. Millisville is very lucky to have a man of Mr. Sims' means and integrity who is passionate about preserving the architectural history of our city. Thank you for allowing my comments to be read. Signed, Terry Z. Green, Chairman, Property and Grounds Committee, First Baptist Church, Millisville. That concludes the letter.
And that was to be in favor of, is what his letter was?
Yes, yes.
All right, is there anyone else present who would like to speak in favor of the amendment?
Sure.
Is it okay if I speak from here?
Yes.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name is Matt Ressing. I'm an attorney. My professional address is 252 Swint Avenue in Millisville, Georgia. Along with Donnie Olznum, a Friar &amp; Olznum, I represent Richard Sims, the applicant. We have two properties under consideration tonight, starting with the special use at 140 North Columbia Street. But first, I'd like to take you back on where this journey began. About five years ago, Richard Sims came in here with his first special use request, and he brought along with him a piece of wood. It was resilient ironwood, the type of decking he uses in his renovation projects. And you may recall that he handed that around. He wanted you to see and feel for yourself the quality of the materials that he puts into these homes. He then talked to you about the benefits of special use, and how it allows property owners to invest the significant amounts needed to rehabilitate these old homes. And he made a number of promises to you, that he would do high-quality work, that he would make these homes safe and sound, and that he would carefully manage his tenants. You voted to approve his first project, but I remember one of you said, "Mr. Sims will be watching you." And he responded, "I welcome it." I hope you have been watching Richard for the past few years, because what he is doing for the city is incredible. He does it with passion and joy, and all he asks of you is the opportunity to keep doing it. Mr. Griffin, if you could go to the next slide when you get a chance.
No problem.
For the past five years, Richard has led a renaissance of Millisville's historic district, along with substantial economic development. His work embodies the city motto, "Historic charm, modern appeal." He has invested literally millions of dollars in Millisville. He has restored numerous historic homes from the brink of destruction. He does this while employing local contractors and specialists. He promotes energy efficiency and fire safety in his homes, and he has kept these properties clean and quiet through active, hands-on management. Next slide, please. His work is so impressive that it has been featured in local publications, and in fact, the Millisville Visitors Center is currently using his personal residence on its homepage. Next, please. Richard makes this work look easy, but an incredible amount of planning, labor, and investment go into each of these projects. These houses, almost to a T, have cracked plaster, rotten wood, crumbled masonry. They require foundation repair. They require new plumbing, new electrical systems, insulation. Many of these homes were built before insulation was common. He puts high-efficiency HVAC units in each of these buildings. He takes extensive efforts to prevent fires. He does landscaping, provides off-street parking, and then, of course, after he's done all this work, there is the constant upkeep and maintenance. Next slide, please. Many of these renovations are only possible through your granting of group use, allowing them to be used as group residences, which helps Richard recoup his significant costs. What's unique about Richard's work is he's not just making these houses beautiful, he's also making them safer and more energy efficient. He's eliminating mold, reinforcing walls and flooring, making sure stairways and balconies have protective railings, and adding fire safeties, like commercial-grade fire alarms and sprinklers, as you can see in these pictures, while maintaining the historic appearance and integrity of these homes. Next slide, please. Again, five years ago, Richard came up here, and he shared with you this piece of scripture that he saw in a church, and has been very meaningful and inspiring to him along his journey. For Richard, this work is more than just a business opportunity, it's a passion. He is building something that many future generations will enjoy. And he is clearly not in this to turn a quick buck. It will take many years for him to recoup these significant investments, and that gives him every incentive to make sure his work is preserved and his tenants are respectful. You may hear tonight people complaining about students and student houses downtown, but they are not complaining about Richard's houses. He and his workers are constantly monitoring the homes and ensuring the neighborhood is clean and peaceful, and he has been very responsive to any issues that have arisen in his homes. He is also not going to rent these beautiful, restored homes to people who are destructive or disrespectful. Next slide, please. Richard does not do this work alone. Every project involves a team of local contractors and specialists. He uses local contractor, general contractor Fancy Robinson, and here in this picture, we have several of the local craftsmen who work on Richard's progress. Every special use that you approve means good-paying jobs for the citizens of Millisville. Your past approval has kept them working through the recent economic downturn, and if you approve our projects today, you will keep them employed for months to come. Next slide, please. In addition to the benefits of granting special use, you also need to look at the consequences of denying it. While Richard has saved many buildings over the past five years, many have fallen to demolition, neglect, and fire. This historic building on South Elbert Street has met the fate of many homes around GMC. Next slide, please. It was torn down to create a parking lot. Georgia College is doing the same thing. These two colleges, while we're glad to have them here, have vast resources and little appetite for renovation. Next slide, please. It's a home on South Wayne Street. Next slide, please. Now a parking lot. And every property that is bought by these colleges takes it off of the tax rolls. Next slide, please. Then we have historic properties whose owners don't have the means or drive to renovate them, and they become public hazards. This commercial building right downtown had its roof collapse with people inside. It's now sat that way for about a year and a half, with protective barriers cutting off the sidewalk. Next, please. Many of these old buildings are tinderboxes. Even the well-maintained ones can catch fire quickly, endangering residents and neighbors. The Stevens Pottery Home is a complete loss. Now, this was a lightning strike, but we've also seen houses burned from preventable causes, like outdated wiring. Next, please. For example, this house, which is on North Columbia, just a few houses up from the house that we're presenting today. This had a grandfathered multifamily use. That means that it could have more than three people living in it, and it did. But unlike special use properties, like what we're requesting, there are no annual inspections for code compliance. Had the owner of this house done the sort of electrical upgrades that Richard does routinely, that house may have been saved without putting residents and first responders at risk. Next slide, please. A fire broke out on Liberty Street a few years ago. Luckily, it's under control by the fire department. It was likely an electrical problem. This house is owned by a sorority, but they've never applied for a group use, meaning it does not have the mandatory code requirements and annual inspections that come with special use. Richard not only does this, he goes above and beyond these requirements, with commercial fire alarms, sprinkler systems, and security features. Next, please. Now let's look specifically at this home at 140 North Columbia Street. It needs a lot of TLC. It's got rotting wood, outdated electrical and plumbing, all the things that Richard typically does to these old homes. We are asking for a modest group occupancy of eight people. Unlike many of the grandfather multifamily homes in the area, Richard will not be chopping this up into apartments. He will maintain the single-family floor plan and add capacity by renovating an existing basement apartment. Next slide, please. This is the neighborhood. All of it is in the group residence overlay. This means that back in 2007, council decided that this was the appropriate zone for group uses like the one we're requesting today. Next, please. Council didn't pick this place for group residence overlay by accident. It is one block from the college and was already heavily populated by students. So council is really just recognizing the reality of the marketplace. This is where students want to live, this is where they do live. This current map I have up here is one that I created. It's based on my knowledge of how houses are being used. It may not be perfect, but I think it gives you a sense of what's going on in the area. Almost every home in this area is a college rental. That's the orange. And over half of them are multifamily uses, either approved group residences, owned by fraternities and sororities, or grandfathered multifamily houses that are unregulated but legal, like the one that burnt down. There are only three owner-occupied houses that I could identify, and at least two of them moved there after the block had already been designated as a group residence overlay. Next, please. The details of Richard's plan are included in our application packet, but I want to point out that it requires very few changes to the historic features of the home. The main floor is already quite large, with five-bedroom spaces. The additional three bedrooms will come from completely renovating an existing basement apartment, and in the process, making it much safer with a fire break and egress from that level and fire safety features. Some parts of the back of the house, as you see here, will be restructured, but from the street, a lot of the original look will be preserved, just improved. Next, please. Part of a group use application is showing off-street parking for all residents. In fact, when Richard receives group approval for a house, his residents do not use the on-street permits they otherwise would be entitled to, freeing up space on the roadside. In this case, there is already adequate off-street parking existing on the property, and few changes will need to be made to the property to accommodate the parking. You can see from this slide that this is one of the largest lots in downtown, and it's about a quarter of a block all to itself. Substantial green space remains. Next, please. According to the Millisville Land Development Code, a special use is presumed to be appropriate when it is in a zone that allows it, as this is. This is in the area that was designated for group use. What you're supposed to look at are these factors. Is it consistent with the stated purpose of the district? Yes, it is in the group overlay district. This is the first place council identified for group use. Is there adequacy of street access? Yes, and in fact, the off-street parking will take cars off of the street. Is there adequacy of public utilities and services? Yes, and in fact, there are several multifamily and approved group residences in the area. Are the parking areas properly located? Yes, in fact, very little changes will need to be made to the existing parking. The hours and manner of use are typical for this. It's a residential use in a residential neighborhood, and the height, size, and location of the buildings will remain the same. As long as these factors are present, you are supposed to give these applications the benefit of the doubt. Next, please. Thank you for your consideration, and let me know if you have any questions.
My name's Ike Thomas. I live in Millisville, Georgia, at 220 Pine Needle Road. I am a member of the First Baptist Church, and I want to speak regarding the Washington Street House. Mr. Sims, a few years ago, purchased the Ferguson House, which joins us. He's made quite a showplace out of it, and we have a great working relationship with Mr. Sims and those residents in that house. Mr. Sims also has another house that joins our property, and it is rented, and we have a great working relationship with the individuals who live there. We are all familiar with the house that burned down, and Mr. Sims intends to replace, and we believe it will add value to the neighborhood and the property, and I'm sure we'll have a great working relationship with those individuals who live there. So I'm conveying the message from the First Baptist Church that we endorse and have no problem with the work Mr. Sims is asking for. That's all. Thank you.
Any questions?
Shouldn't be any questions for me, I wouldn't think.
Is there anybody else that wants to speak in favor before we move on? At this time, I will recognize anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the amendment. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Mike Cruz, 120 North Columbia. I apologize, I am terrible talking like this, but before I read what I had, just to kind of go off some of those points, I know the cops have been called on one. First of all, the letter was not for this property, and that was not for this property either, so just want to make that clear. But cops have been called already. We got a four-year-old daughter, and we've had to yell at them to stop cussing. So, I mean, I didn't really want to talk about the renters as a whole, but-
Speak more into your mic, because I don't think they're going to be able to hear-
There are issues that would go against that bullet point, for sure, but I'd rather just stick to this. That's here. I hope that some of the committee listened to the issues that the voting residents this time, as I can only feel our issues are falling on deaf ears throughout our local government. Two issues regarding this property and just the area is parking, because parking was brought up, so I just want to bring that up. More people jammed into a small area. Can I bring this down, or? More people jammed in a small area means more cars, of course. Home parking may be adequate on paper, but is hardly utilized to its capacity from my observations. To give an example, based on prior board meetings I've attended, 201 North Columbia Street is zoned for 10 cars. I've never seen more than eight, usually less. This is the sorority house that is moving across the street, and where those cars are parked becomes clear when you see all the sorority stickers on the cars in the street. So having that marked on the plans doesn't really add up in real world. Additionally, more tenants mean more guests. More guests means, yes, more parking, congestion, and issues. Those issues are already exacerbated by illegally parked cars and an enforcement, which was brought up before, that this is a city issue, and it kind of is, but we should probably deal with that before we keep compounding this. When I had time to call in illegal parkers, and I was doing it daily during the summer, for instance, we were met once by a very rude officer who was not willing to enforce laws to clear the grassy area of the city property or sidewalk pass. When I asked about potential individuals in wheelchairs, which there are some in the area, his response was that they can call themselves. Mind you, this is late July and August, you know, 100-degree weather. Additionally, and one I can only presume was an act of targeting, again, feel free to talk to me about this, I and only I was given a ticket for parking on North Columbia Street for lack of parking permit. This after I was told the last time I received a parking that the signs were no longer enforced. To this day, cars are illegally parked on yellow, parking without permits, blocking crosswalks with no additional tickets going out. Also, they're still parking illegally in the grass in the city's property and still blocking the sidewalks. Why is that relevant? We're going to have more cars there, on the street, residents, and guests. Parking has been actually more packed this year than I've ever seen before, and that's without having the antebellum full and what will be 201 full as well, and not counting the eight we're going to have in this house. We're already more packed than before. Tenant enforcement. These houses are constantly being overfilled beyond regulation. Many of the homes on North Columbia are still zoned for no more than three non-related residents, but nearly all of them have more than their zoned maximum. These include 441 West Hancock, 111 North Columbia Street, 121 North Columbia Street, and 140 North Columbia Street, which currently has five tenants. I submitted emails in regards to 140 North Columbia Street to both the police department in zoning and planning. I had to bounce around getting answers until I was able to confirm that the five residents were outside the permitted limit. I have not heard from enforcement side in months about that, if anything is happening. Maybe that's because folks are simply assuming that the illegal number will now be rubber-stamped to eight after this meeting. What I've learned in the last six months is that there are some on this board working for the city, as well as those in the police department who will go out of their way to not do their job, not enforce laws, not listen to or respond to permanent residents. I'm not from Millisville originally, but this is my home, and I would like to raise my daughter safely in the neighborhood.
Mr. Cruz, just to be sure I understand you correctly, you believe that we should deny the permit to this residence to lawfully have eight individuals reside there because there are other properties that are thumbing their nose up the law?
Including this property, yes. Including this property. This property has five residents right now. They want eight. What's it going to be, 10? I mean, it's already being ignored. That's my point. You tell me.
And as for the on-street parking issue, these are publicly accessible parking spaces that can be used by anyone, whether they live in this area or not, because that is not a residential zone. Is that correct?
That is very unclear. Four years ago, when I went to get my permit, yes, because their signs, I'm fairly certain she said that they were no longer being enforced. Hadn't gotten a pass in four years. Nobody's got passes out there, no tickets, until this summer, where my car and my car only got a ticket for not having a permit. And if you got there two months ago, there's maybe two cars with permits, nobody else has any, no tickets. So, yeah, I don't know what's going on with that. That would be another issue, but we can't just keep passing that along and expecting it's going to get fixed, because it hasn't gotten fixed.
Mr. Jordan, for clarification, are we enforcing residential parking permits in this area? this area?
I'd have to defer to the city manager or to our police department as to whether or not we're enforcing them. The instructions that have, I think, come from the city manager as well as that have come from my office is enforcement of, only the parking enforcing of the number of residents. We have had communication with several of the residents in that area that with regards to more than three unrelated, assuming it's not a non-conforming use, but if it is a violation of our three unrelated statute, then what we've asked in order to facilitate enforcement and prosecution is that the complainant provide us with an affidavit as to what that complainant has observed relative to the number of cars, number of residents, so that we can have the probable cause that we need in order to issue a citation and then get the matter in the municipal court for our prosecutor and our judge to decide the issue. We have been, we've been fairly aggressive in encouraging folks to do that, because that's really the only way relative to the three unrelated. If we can't post a code enforcement or a police officer at the property for the number of days required in order to establish the violation, then the next best thing is for the complainant to provide us with an affidavit, which my office has offered to assist in, so that we, again, have the necessary probable cause in which to cite not only those individuals living in the prop, in the house, but also the owner of the property.
Have we received any such affidavit or complaint?
Not through my office. I don't know if anybody's done an individual affidavit outside of assistance of my office. Mr. Griffin may know more about that, but not through, not through my office.
I have not. Can you, can you confirm that typically you've requested, what, like 21 days straight of photos of parking? Is that correct?
No, if, no, all we request is that you provide an affidavit that complies with the ordinance, that can articulate a violation, enough to give us probable cause to get the folks cited and into court, and then the issue can be cited with the solicitor and the judge.
Look, I mean, I'll be honest, like, based on how supportive the city has been, I haven't submitted one. And if you ask me where this is at, I'm going to tell you it's probably thrown away at this point. I mean, they, they literally handed us a list of their five names and their phone numbers. I mean, it's, I'm telling you.
Well, that would be a great affidavit.
I agree, but when you, when you talk to me, and when we hear, and when the police are coming at me, I mean, yeah, I don't have a lot of faith, so, but I'll look for it. I'll look for it.
Yeah, I don't think you and I have dealt...
No, we haven't. You're right.
...the city attorney's office. If you contact my office, we will assist you, just like I have said that we will. Any, any citizen in that regard.
Okay.
Mr. Cruz, you have spoken with Mr. Griffin, right? Because you've emailed me, and I responded, and Mr. Griffin also have responded back stating that same things what Mr. Jordan just stated about signing the affidavit.
With, in regards to the police officer?
Three are related, any of it.
The police officer, yes. Yes. The five, that one, no, but yes. Yes.
Anybody else have any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Cruz.
Amelia Pelton, 221 North Jefferson Street. I had not planned on speaking tonight, but I'm just really want to speak on behalf of the Cruz family. I know them very well. His wife teaches dance with me at Georgia College. She is my right arm, and they have just been through, really, a living hell where they live, as far as parties, noise, you name it. I hear it at work when I see her daily, and they have a four-year-old who has to hear profanity that you would not believe, and it's, it goes around the corner on Hancock Street, and, you know, their only thing now is that they're thinking about moving. And I don't want to lose a young family like them. I mean, my husband and I moved here 25 years ago, it's our 26th year, and we raised three children on North Jefferson, and North Jefferson, thank the Lord, is a pocket where we are, our block, and we fought to keep it that way. We have get-togethers with our neighbors, and we, we are, we are like the only pocket left, because they are, they are having a hard time, folks, and I would love to have a meeting with whoever, city council, zoning, with concerned neighbors, an informal meeting, and let y'all know what is happening. They have called the police repeatedly. I've called the police on North Jefferson. Now, Richard Sims is also my friend, and a dear friend, and he does excellent work, excellent work. I've been in every one of his homes. I wish, I wish my house looked as good as what he's doing. And he's sincere and cares about Milledgeville, but we have a problem, folks, with people who are grandfathered in homes, and we have more than three people living in a home that is not designated for that. We have seen it happen for 25 years, more, and more, and more, and more. I mean, where is it going to end? I think nine homes on North Jefferson are that way right now. There's people in them, and it's not zoned for more than three, yet three are in it, you know? So I just, I just want to support them.
Sounds to me like the issues may very well be coming from established homes that are grandfathered in as opposed to properties managed by Mr. Sims, but...
My name is Lynn Knapp. I live at 517 West Hancock. My property connects with this one at its southwest corner. Can you go back a couple?
That way, one.
I think it's the one to the right. Back the other way. Yeah, that one's good. My property connects with this one at its southwest corner, which is closer than the last property I came in here to speak out against, which was the Antebellum Inn. Close enough that I could hear Ms. Flake's little dog, Molly, barking from that sun porch. What I have now is not so pleasant. So just go ahead. Go ahead and approve it. That's what you're going to do, historically speaking, anyway, because you approved all of those houses over in the area that was not supposed to be zoned, the one that had the ordinance against rezoning for special use. That whole area's been transformed, so why not this one too? Because it is zoned that way. I don't even know why you bother with the discussion. Is it just a formality? Those pesky ordinances that we have to get over? I think it's a waste of time. It's a waste of my time, it's a waste of your time, a waste of everybody who's speaking out against its time. Some of you council members, if you want to change some of the photos, some of you council members have repeatedly voted in favor of this, allowed it, enabled it, indirectly encouraging more of this transition, this complete transformation of the demographics of the downtown historic residential area. It's really rapidly gone downhill in the last six years that I've been here, full-time, since we moved from Europe, so much so that I wouldn't really call it downtown residential area anymore. It's more like an extension of the campus. And yes, those are beer cans. Why stop now? Everything is catered to a certain age group. It has a ripple effect. Landlords are now starting to reach their tentacles further out into places like Carrington Woods, where my friends live, who are being encroached on, near the hospital, I think Allen Wood, out 212, everywhere. How long before families who have been out there for decades start being snuffed out of their neighborhood too? It's not that much fun for us mature, mature-in-age people. But don't say no. No need to say no. Just I, I, I. Go ahead. I know that I don't matter. I get that. I don't matter. My family doesn't matter. I mean, even the family right next door with the four-year-old child doesn't matter. You council members do not represent me. You represent the landlords, the businessmen, and the landlords need another house, even though there's no shortage of places to live downtown, not at least according to that study done a couple of years ago, whatever. So in this case, the landlord needs to replace the little old lady, my friend, Ms. Flake, who lived alone there, all by herself, since the 1990s. It's now imperative, crucial, that she be replaced with at least eight fraternity boys. Say eight, it could be 10, 12, 15, who knows? Nobody's going to check. Just like 201 or whatever across the street from the Antebellum was zoned for 10 or 12. They admitted to having 15 in there at the planning and zoning meeting. So it's, it's like a feeding frenzy with these houses. Who's going to die next? Who's going to give up next and move? When is it going to be enough? Will it ever stop? Is it too late already? Probably. You cannot change the stuff back. So go ahead, I away. When you adjourn this evening, you're going to get off your chair, leave the building, turn off your computer screen. It's over for you. The decision's been made. You're going to enjoy your neighborhoods, and you will not be impacted by how your decision affects us. It's just the beginning for us. Will you ever work for your own citizens? So go ahead. My husband could not be here because we have a family, and we had to divide and conquer tonight, but he wanted me to point out that, as Mr. Cruz pointed out, there's already five in there. There were five in there at least since closing, and it's been very unpleasant. We have called the police ourselves, he and I both, several times. We usually don't get very much relief, and we have pictures, of course, and videos of cussing, and it's just, it's just not pleasant. Thank you.
You said, Ms. Knapp, you said five is, five are already in the residence.
Yes, ma'am. Five are already there. Actually, in my block that used to be all residents, I had people at 100, they passed away. There were actual female students in there right after we purchased our house. 110 had a regular family in it. Mr. Cruz's house had a family in it, still does. Ms. Flake was there. Behind me was a painter. Beside me, Mr. Steve Stengel, the pilot. I had neighbors across the street, now have six in one, six in the blue house, and four in the one on the corner. So even Jackson Street is starting to be populated, but there are more than three in nearly every house that surrounds me. And it was not that way when I moved to the neighborhood in 2008.
But the overlay or group housing had been established in 2007, so you were aware of this area could become...
I understand that. There was also an ordinance against a special use for sororities or fraternities in the Liberty Street area, which has also been violated, so I don't really think it matters if I have zoning or not.
But, but this area that you moved into did have the overlay.
Yes, I was not aware of that when I bought the house from 5,000 miles away, and nobody informed me of this. So I moved into what was a normal neighborhood with normal neighbors, and they have been one at a time, and I understand that it's zoned that way, but other neighborhoods that were not zoned that way have been approved as well, so it's here or there.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
What did you say you're located? You, you stay behind this house?
I am at 517 West Hancock. It's across from the Dogwood, I think, apartments. My wall touches Mr. Cruz, and I meet at the corner of this property.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, boy.
Did I say a few words, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Well, we made these special rules and regulations for citizens to be able to come and complain, tell us what's going on in their community. We made these special over limits for these homes, and over the year, we have had not a one complaint. Only time we hear a complaint is when we come to the meeting, but during, during, during the year, they had the opportunity to have complaint, and that's the reason we did these homes like this, where we could go in there and close them down. Now we don't have no, no regulation on them. And when we do give them the special, special use, we can go in there and do something about it. But the problem is, we don't hear nothing from the community about them once we approve them. All the problem about the drinking, the loud noises, is, is none exists.
I disagree with that.
Only time we hear it is prior to special use, but after they've been, been granted special use, we don't hear none of that. So what are we going to do about that?
You're not, not hearing it because nobody's complaining. You're not hearing it because the complaints are not being forwarded to you.
Well, that's all we can do our job, is that we hear something where we can close them down, and where we have regulation to close them down if they don't comply.
Well, Mr. Mullins, I...
We want them to comply and be good neighbors.
I will have to say that...
If we don't hear that, we can't do nothing about it.
But, Mr. Mullins, they have complained. They have complained. I, I will have to say that they are complaining, and, and, and there's been complaints about the parking, there's been complaints about the traffic, there's been complaints about the noise, and there's been complaints about the trash that's left after the parties, and there's been complaints about 200 and 300 people being in, being in the yards, and we've seen pictures of red cups and trash and everything else that's left after parties. I, I'll have to beg to differ with you about the complaints.
Well, my, my, my saying, this has been, been prior to we grant these special use. I haven't heard, because I always ask, that's my first question, I, after we grant special use, have there any, have been any complaints? I haven't heard that.
They, they come all year long.
After we have granted, because, because of that. Now, I don't know, maybe you have.
Yeah, they come all year long. Yes, there have been complaints.
Well, that's the reason...
And, and, Mr. Mullins, let me say, since I've been in office, and, you know, this is my fourth year, I know Ms. Knapp has consistently complained in this prior to Mr. Griffin coming into office, since Mr. Griffin been in office, I know the Cruzes have complained. We, some stuff came up New Year's Eve, so we're sending officers out there. I know Mr. Griffin is checking the file to see when the officer goes out, whether or not the complaint is accurate. I think that's where we got to, where we got to the point of saying, would you all sign affidavit stating about the no, the... would you all sign affidavit stating about the no, the three unrelated rules, this, that, and the other? But I can truly say, Ms., they have been 100% complaining since I've been in office. They've sent us all kinds of videos. And when I say us, I mean myself, Mr. Griffin, I forwarded them on to him. Mr. Jarrett, I have spoken with him. And they're not the only ones, as, you know, as they're coming one-on-one. You know, I know Ms. Pelton, I think she tried to reach me maybe prior to the holidays or something like that. But we never could get together to talk about it. And I think her son or somebody had got sick and then I wasn't here. So we're constantly getting these complaints. And as I talked with Walter last week, one thing I like to try to do is share with everybody. If it's in your district and I know it, then I'm gonna call you and tell you. This is what's going on in your district. I mean, how do we handle this at this point in time? I think what we're trying to do to rectify it is, you know, get, get everything documented, being able to, as Mr. Jordan say, getting everybody ticketed. I think, Mr. Jordan, you know, we've talked about the off-street parking and, and all in the green space and making sure everything is on the up and up on that. Even with that, we get all kind of videos. And where, where does it stop? I don't know. Where does it stop? And I hear you when you said, well, we, we granted this. What, prior to 2008? Is that what you said, Mr. Reynolds? This, this was changed-
The overlay was completed in 2007.
2007. So you might haven't heard it, but I almost find it impossible, as much as I've heard it, that none of you all then get some, if nothing but the end of it. I don't know. Ms. Knapp, is that all, I mean, Ms. Knapp, is that all you want to say? Okay, thank you. Is it anybody else here that wants to speak in opposition of?
I know that in my district, I have the Liberty Street area that's in mine. And those people complain a lot and they have had to put up with a lot. And I do know that one of the, one of the constituents in my area did this affidavit. And one, that house that is on the corner there, it did get banned. So they have been complaining.
Well, yes, ma'am, I understand they've been complaining. But if they own the special use, once they get, you know, once they complain, we got the right to close them down. We don't have to have an affidavit. If they, they keep violating and they own this special use, that's what I'm saying. That we have the right to close them down without getting affidavits or anything. That's what I'm saying.
And I- We actually have a greater degree of oversight with properties that do have the special use, the group use overlay approved. We have a lot more oversight for those properties than we do with these grandfathered-in properties, these multiple apartments. Yeah, I, I agree with you, Mr. Mullins. And, you know, I, I think, I think that oftentimes the, the, the general issues that come with having students in a downtown area are incorrectly ascribed to these specific properties. I don't think that we're seeing a lot of these issues come out of the group housing residents so much as we are just with the volume of students that live within about, you know, an eight-block radius. There's a lot of students down there. You're going to have issues with students. I don't think that it's fair to ascribe, to ascribe it to these specific houses.
Well, let me say this, Mr. Reynolds. I know, what is it, Liberty during Rush Week or whatever the week is, when the young ladies, the sororities or whatever they're doing out there, I don't know, because I'm not down there. But Liberty Street is a constant complaint. As you know, with 441 Columbia and coming off, what's that, West McIntosh that runs across, you, you do get your, your fair share from all of them, is what it appeared to me, that we get a lot of complaints from each home. Mr. Griffin, I'm gonna ask you the question then. If we, if, if we have so much of a control or we can go in and do something, are we not looking to that, to be able to go in? Because what I gathered, or I heard from Mr. Jordan a while back is, you know, we just don't have the authority to be able to go into somebody's houses without probable cause, even with, what is it, the different three unrelated? Is that what I've heard over the last three years? That we don't have?
Well, let me just address that, ma'am. The, the city does not have the authority. We can, we can go up and knock on the door and we can ask how many people are residing in this particular residence? And quite frankly, sometimes when we have done that, we've been told correctly what that number is. Citations have been issued. But the, 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 the most efficient way to get, to address the three unrelated issue is, again, an affidavit by a resident, by a witness, who will cite to a violation of that ordinance. And then have that citation issued and have the individual, not only those residing there, but the property owner brought to municipal court and have the solicitor prosecute. The judge will make that decision. We have found that when that is done, that we get compliance. Now, you know, we had the issue on Jefferson Street, the Davison House, where the city had to go to court and sought an injunction, emergency injunction, because there was about to be a large number of individuals who were going to be tenants in that particular house. We were granted that emergency injunction. And as a result of that litigation, as it stands right now, there is no violations taking place in that house. Whether or not we will have to revisit that litigation at some point in the future, you know, no one knows that. But it is a matter of enforcement. It's a matter of having the manpower to enforce. But that's why it's so important to have resident participation. Because once we did get them cited and once we get them in court, we have a much better opportunity to change attitude and practices. It's been proven time and time again. When these students have to call home to their parents because they have been cited, again, we, we see changes in attitude. But we don't, for whatever reason, I'm not criticizing the resident, but for whatever reason, we don't get that level of participation specific to any given, given house and/or any given situation with the, with the residences. It does not sound like to me that if this residence, that's the subject of the zoning application, if it is housing five individuals and it has not done that since the time that we first adopted this revised and restated zoning ordinance, which has been several years ago, then obviously there is a violation occurring there. And if someone wants to put forth an affidavit, and again, my office has offered to assist anybody who wants to do that, then we can proceed to have the probable cause we need to cite the individuals and get them in court, as well as the property owner, quite frankly.
Okay, Mr. Steve, I see you sat up. Normally when you sit up, you wanna say something before I go on to ask for the rebuttal. Did you wanna say something? He's on mute. He's muted again.
He has to unmute himself.
Mr. Chambers, can you unmute?
I apologize, ma'am, I didn't realize you were talking to me.
I said you sat up in the chair. Normally when you, you rise up like that, it's something you wanna say before I go on to ask for the rebuttal.
No, I'm, I'm good so far.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm right in line with exactly what our attorney just stated. And this is, this has been a situation that we go through it time and time again. And that is, the bottom line is enforcement. And I think after that is court. And once we make an example, I think we're gonna start to see some change. But until we get to that point, we're gonna see a repetition of, of what's happening.
Okay.
And that's all. Thanks.
Thanks.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for Ms. Graham.
Ms. who? Oh, Ms. Murry, Ms. Murry.
I noticed three out of four of the board members voted no. Could you give me their concerns, what were some of their reasonings?
Well, they just, they heard, you know, been hearing about the traffic and the same things you're basically hearing tonight. And so they just said no. And one did vote yes, though.
Right. Thank you.
All right, at this time, is there any rebuttal on behalf of the amendment? Did I miss something?
Just so I can speak intelligently and where people can hear, is it okay to take my mask off?
Just move it down a little bit so we can hear you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, my, my name's Richard Sims. I live at 330 West Green Street, downtown Millisville. Live in a corner red light intersection. The university owns the three blocks across the street, including a large dormitory complex. I love the city of Millisville. I love the life from this college and from Georgia Military College. And it's my delight to live and work here by choice and to invest in economic development. I put seven figures of cash into construction every year downtown, saving these beautiful homes. I have federal, Greek revival, Victorian, Tudor, craftsman architecture that was built in the National Historic District. It's just such a privilege. A lot of the problems you're hearing about tonight are because the neighborhoods where I invest were a block from campus. There's 7,000 students that come into the city of Millisville downtown to attend school. And it's like being in the city of Atlanta. You have the same urban problems. You have noise, you have congestion, you have parking. Students are coming to campus for the purpose that the city actually exists, in my belief. And, and so that all said and done, planning and zoning and the fire marshal have been inside 140 North Columbia. They, they were inside and inspected the house and they went in the basement apartment as well. This is a grandfather duplex, but I'm not talking about that tonight. But it, it's, at the time, last semester, there were three students present and as residents in the home. The home sits on a one-acre corner lot. Just a beautiful property that's been very badly neglected. I'm putting a $40,000 roof on this house as we speak right now. You know, repairing rotten woodwork. The roof leaked like a sieve when it rained. And it was a beautiful standing seam historic roof, which is the reason it's so expensive. I'm putting the same type of roof back on the property. It's my desire to come in and do the interior upgrades, the insulation, the wiring, the plumbing, all this to save this home for another century. And, and it's, the interesting thing about this street, there are four city blocks here. There are probably some 60 houses in this, in this little neighborhood that's designated for special use. And in, in those 60 homes, there are a number of apartment buildings. The, the kind gentleman that spoke back here, he lives across the street from the sorority. There's two more sororities within two houses of him. And another two sororities within four houses of him. They're apartment buildings, just with, literally just within a half a block from where he lives. So, so to talk about noise and, and the, the distress of living in an urban environment, it's not related to my business. My, my business is ethical. I, I have a payroll employee that picks up garbage at 7:00 a.m. every morning. We tutor and train our residents on how to behave in the neighborhood. To my belief, we don't have a history of code enforcement violations as well. It's just, just such a privilege to live and work here. And then, and the reality is, the neighborhood downtown has changed during the time that I've lived in Millisville for the past dozen years. It's, it's, everything's student occupied. And the special use permit that I'm requesting tonight gives a city, the, the city fire marshal and code enforcement, the right to enter our property every year and inspect it. Inspect it for building safety, inspect it for the wiring, inspect it for firing safety, inspect it for occupancy. It gives a city the only, only authority the city has to regulate parking. And the properties where I work are students to behave. My, my tenants actually graduate from college, they pay the rent, they're on signed leases. And it's just, it's just a wonderful privilege. And, and to see these young men and women grow up and, and have a whole future in front of them. And, and they share the passion for the neighborhood as well. They share the passion for architecture like I do.
Well, I don't think any of us doubt the work that you do. You're talking to a realtor of, right at 20 years. I don't doubt the work. I've been in some of your houses and I've seen the work. That, that's, that's not the problem.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment to Mr. Sims. I, and, and I'm not necessarily talking about this particular property, but I listen to you talk every time about the, the amount of money that you spend, about the fact that it's an urban community, so on and so forth. I know that with urban community planning, a lot of times they plan for older people as well as younger people, as well as younger people and as well as people with families to live in communities together. And I think I've asked you once before, you know, as you're renovating property, you don't think that there are, are, are people who, even single families, like a husband and wife or a husband and wife with a small child, that might be interested in, in apartment living or, or living close to downtown so that they can live in a community where they're safe and can walk downtown too, but living among the students as well? Everything should not just be geared, or all thought patterns should not be just towards students and, and what students want close to downtown. There are other people who are interested in living close to downtown and walking to the restaurants and, and, and eating out, as well as having, having sidewalks and street lights and so forth, that they can live and live safe as well. But everything is always geared towards just student, student, student. And, and I'm, I'm like the rest of them, where does this stop? Because it's branching out into the other neighborhoods. It's branching out throughout the community. And everything is always geared towards students. Millisville is not just here for students. We do promote other people coming here to live and be comfortable and be safe as well. But it just doesn't seem to have any interest for, towards, for people because most people are trying to get money and the students bring money. But people that are retired, people that might be interested in coming here to live and, and don't want to have to drive their cars or, 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 but they wanna live in a comfortable and safe neighborhood, they might be interested in doing the same thing that you're doing for the students as well.
That's, that's a great concept and I appreciate you sharing that. And in fact, I am one of those people. I am older and I love living downtown. And I have many neighbors that love living downtown as well, including neighbors that support the work that I'm doing. And in fact, I'm talking with, with one of the local universities right now about faculty housing, which would be exactly what you're discussing, where you have housing for families. The issue, though, before city council, is that the special use permit is only for unrelated parties of more than three. If I do a house for a family, there's no reason for, for a municipal hearing because you can have more than three people in a house if they're related. So, so in actuality, doing family-type housing would not appear before this council.
But, but I, I'm not just, that's, that's why I said I'm not necessarily talking about this home, but I'm talking about other homes that you have. The, the homes on Liberty Street could have been a perfect example, that you could have divided into apartments rather than putting students there with, right with those people that you knew were, took so much pride in their residences. But it seems like that's not even the consideration at all. It's about getting the most people into these homes to make the most money.
I'm delighted to discuss Liberty Street in more detail with the next house, but in, in reality, in Liberty- in, in reality, in Liberty, I have been turning apartment buildings back into the single-family homes. And the ultimate use of a single-family home is determined by who wishes to rent it.
If I could chime in quickly, a question for Attorney Jordan. A group housing overlay for any of these properties, uh, would not specifically be for the benefit of students, would it? It would actually allow unrelated individuals of any age bracket or demographic to cohabitate if they so choose and were to set up leases with the landlord. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
And he also stated that, I think in something I read, uh, might have been the packet I was reading on some of, uh, Mr. Sims' paperwork. But, you know, let's be real, that's not the intention. You know, that is just not. So I'm not going to... Okay. Is there any other rebuttal on behalf of the amendment? If you're done, Mr. Sims? And then nobody else have any other questions? Well, you're, you're not for, on behalf of...
No.
I'm going to do one now, uh, rebuttal in opposition to the amendment. So you can come on, make your way on up here.
All right, real quick. Um, I mean, I, I, I don't blame Mr. Sims. He, he's making money. I mean, cool. Um, but I do take offense that a council member and him would assume that we don't know where this sound is coming from. I mean, it's right outside our window. So, I mean, don't try to say that. And there are five. So, questions? If I need to sign one, I will. I'd rather avoid it. I mean, I'd be fine if there were five people there legally, but now we're trying to do eight. And that's... But, questions?
Is there any? Has there anyone else come on, Ms. Knapp?
I just want to reiterate a couple of things. Mr. Griffin, Mr. Griffin, if you are able to put the picture up again of the house with the beer cans, um, and regarding the behavior of this particular house already has been established. And we have called the police numerous times for no, noise on a regular weeknight, well into the night when my, my kids have to get up to go to school. The other thing is, I want to reiterate that this was a normal neighborhood that I bought into. There were not, um, the concentration of students in this neighborhood at the time that we purchased this house. It was completely, uh, transformed mostly in the last six years. But at 2008, when we purchased this house, it was not, um, mostly students. The students were in apartments, apartment buildings, dormitories, and other designated student housing. This, this thing with the, putting as many people as we can fit in to a structure is a relatively, um, recent, um, I can't think of the word. I'm looking for... Development, development, uh, over the last six to eight years.
Anyone else have any questions?
Uh, and this was, um, after 7:00 AM. By the way, Mr. Griffin, I emailed you these back then. It was well after 7:00 AM.
And with, with, just for council's knowledge, with these particular photos, when Ms. Knapp emailed them to me, I immediately contacted Officer Hicks, who was the code enforcement officer at that time. And between the time she emailed them to me and I contacted her back to let her know that Officer Hicks had gone over there, Officer Hicks had required the residents to clean up the yard. So, uh, are we able to deal with every call, every time that comes to any of these properties? Not every time, because as, as Mr. Jordan said, we don't have the manpower. But when we can, we certainly, we certainly do.
Are there any questions or comments from council? And council, let me, let me state for the record too, as soon as I get any information, I go ahead and forward it to Mr. Griffin as well. There have been times I have said, uh, woke him up, or I've gotten up and said, "Look, go over there. Uh, we shouldn't have to be woke up at all times of night because we got a, a bunch of college students." And by all means, I say this all the time, I want them to enjoy their college experiences, but not at, not at the, um, the stake of our, our residents down there. We, we, we don't want them to do that. Uh, but we do want them to enjoy their college life experiences there. Um... And the one thing I, I do want to stress is, I know oftentimes I hear it all the time, uh, "Well, we're a college town." No, we're a town with three colleges in it. And we adapt. We, we treat one another with respect. I think I've said this more than one time. One of the school's motto is "Live responsibly, think responsibly, act responsibly." And so if you're going to do that, then that means your neighbor. I think that's why they tried to come up with the thing about, um, the cleanup day and allowing the students to go out and meet their neighbors. But I want to say that tonight. All right. This concludes the presentation of evidence. Uh, council members, you have heard the ordinance and the presentation of evidence. Is there a motion on the amendment?
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we disapprove the findings of the Planning and Zoning Committee and approve the special housing request.
Agreed.
Is there, uh, any further discussion on the amendment? All right. Let's, clerk, please call the roll.
Question, question. Let, let, let Mr. Jordan explain the vote on this.
Say what now, Mr. Mullins? Let him do what now?
Yeah, let, let Mr. Jordan explain the vote.
The motion, uh, that was made by Councilman Reynolds is to basically disapprove or not follow the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and approve the special, the request for the, uh, special use. Planning and zoning had voted to deny the special use. He is saying to, instead of following the recommendation, as we do from time to time, we hear an approval, uh, that, uh, to disapprove the decision of the Planning and Zoning or their recommendation and to approve the special use.
Okay.
Okay. And since we had an interruption on that one, um, I'm, I'm going to ask that, we, um, let me, let me call for that, um, motion in a second again, Mr. Jordan, since you had to go back and explain it. So, is there a motion on the amendment? I need a motion and a second.
Motion that we disapprove the findings of the PNZ Board and approve the special housing permit request.
Agreed.
Yeah. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
No.
Mr. Mullins?
No.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
No.
Ms. Walden?
No.
All right. So, um... With that, uh, vote tally, Mr. Uh, Jordan. Uh, we had a, what, four, two? So with that, um...
I think it was, wasn't it four no's?
Yes.
Four two.
That is correct. That's what I heard.
We had four two.
That's what I heard.
Mm-hmm. Four two. All right. So, uh...
Four no's and two...
Two, yes.
Ayes.
Okay. And even with, um, them motioning to accept the, um, not accept the, um, planning and zoning, the four, two vote would override that. Am I right?
The four, two vote would vote to disapprove of the, uh, decision of planning and zoning and to deny the special use.
Correct. That's what I was asking.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right. So the second public hearing is to consider ordinance O-2011-13 to amend the land development code to allow the special use overlay for the property located at 301 South Liberty. Mr. News, our clerk has his public hearing being properly posted and advertised.
Yes, ma'am, it has been.
I'll ask the clerk to please read the ordinance by caption.
An ordinance meaning the ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002, known as the Land Development Code of the City of Milledgeville, Georgia, ordinance grants a special use for eight residences for the property located at 140 North Columbia Street.
All right. I will recognize the zoning, zoning administrator for report and the advisory decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Ms. Murvis?
Okay. This property is not within the overlay. It's really vacant land, and he is like, he is wanting to place the property within the special use overlay, and it was unanimous to deny.
Thank you, Ms. Murvis. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of the amendment?
My name is Matt Resting. I'm attorney. My address is 252 Swint Avenue in Milledgeville. I represent Richard Sims. Uh, I would like to take a minute to respond to some of the things we heard, uh, from some of the local residents and, and make a few things clear. We are not hearing a lot of complaints by a wide variety of people. What we are hearing are the same complaints again and again by three families. Every one of these hearings, we have a, a husband and a wife come up and make the same complaints. And a lot of these complaints are very petty. Uh, they called the city manager to call a police officer to go tell their neighbors to pick up beer cans. That is a waste of government resources and a waste of the police. What you could do is be a neighbor and go talk to your neighbors about things like that. You could talk to the property owner. Richard Sims has been incredibly responsive. In fact, I remember at the very beginning of one of the very first special use approvals on Wilkinson Avenue, shortly after the group residence was approved, there were students there that threw a party and left some beer cans out. Uh, Mervyn Graham from Planning and Zoning that next morning called Richard, and within an hour, he had those students in his house and he was reading them the riot act. They cleaned it up and they didn't do it again. That's how you function in a neighborhood and in a society. What we have here are families that choose to live within one block of a college, and yet they can't grapple with the idea that they might have to share what they call their neighborhood with college students, who are occasionally unruly, but can be talked to just like any other neighbors and can be educated. In fact, that's the job that I'm in and that a job that a lot of people in this community are in. Treating these students as transients only ensures that they will remain transients, and they will not stay in this community after graduation and help our, build our local economy. Whereas if you look downtown, many of the businesses that we have that are thriving right now are businesses that were formed by former GMC and Georgia College students. We should be encouraging them and treating them like people, not as nuisances. And when they break the law, they should pay the penalty. But to treat the, the repeated complaints by two or three families that are going and, and taking pictures of beer cans on someone's porch and reporting it to the city manager rather than having constructive conversation, that does not indicate a widespread dissent with what is going on in our city. And when you allow those few voices to, uh, to stymie development and progress, you end up with this, the pit, 301 South Liberty Street. This was a grandfathered multifamily home. It was a popular student rental, as many, many houses in this neighborhood are, being a block or two from the college. In fact, these have been popular student rentals for over 100 years. Now, it burned down about 10 years ago. It had the owner build it back that year, it could have retained its multifamily designation. This was a house that already had a multifamily use. But after a year, it lost that designation, and to build it back now would require the person who built it to only be able to rent it out to no more than three unrelated residents. And just to remind you, those people could have as many parties as they want. They could have as many people over as they want. Group use has nothing to do with the behavior. And in fact, the consultants that you hired, a significant expense from the city, told you that your zoning laws are not there to regulate conduct. That is inappropriate use. It doesn't make economic sense to build a new home here. This would be a corner home in one of the, uh, most desirable, uh, pieces of real estate in the city. And due to its FR, uh, F, uh, SFR1 designation, it has to have a certain minimum footprint. It has to have a certain minimum square footage. It's intended to be a large home. Furthermore, the character of this neighborhood has changed significantly. You do not have owner occupiers buying in this neighborhood. Presently, I believe there's four in this neighborhood. One is Mitch, Mr. Richard Sims, uh, and the only, uh, and the only one who has come here in this neighborhood in opposition is one family, the Napps. I'm sorry, not the Napps, but the Altons. So are you doing your zoning for the benefit of two or three people in this community simply because they are vowed and constantly calling you? I would like you to ask that question of yourselves. What we're asking today is the ability to come back with a plan for this spot, to raise a home where this pit now stands. If you allow us to come back, you are not saying that it will happen. You are not saying he will be given a certain number of residents. You are simply saying that you anticipate the possibility of having a home here that has more than three residents. We would then have to come back with a specific construction plan, a specific parking plan, and also request for a certain level of occupancy. At that time, you could still say no, or you could say yes, or you could ask for modifications. Uh, next slide, please. This is a very lonely block in the middle of some of the most desirable real estate in Milledgeville. Richard owns half of the block facing South Liberty Street, and there are only two houses on it. This is a half block that if it were, you know, one, one block up, it would have at least six houses on it. Right now, there are only two. So there's plenty of space, plenty of space for parking and plenty of buffer from the surrounding properties. In fact, the closest property to this house is the First Baptist Church. You have now heard two people, uh, speak from that church on behalf of this work. Uh, next slide, please. The two houses that are already on this half block have been lovingly restored by Richard at considerable expense. For those talking about him just trying to make money, I guarantee you, he has not made any money on these houses yet. With the amount of money he pours in this house, it is a long-term investment that requires them to be upkept for years before he can see a return. You can see the quality of work in his house. This is the Tomlinson Fort House, a historic home. You can also see that he's not only renovated the house, he's made a number of provisions for neighborhood safety. There were drop-offs on either side of this house. He has put security fencing, uh, and beautified the street through landscaping. Next slide, please. Just across the street, we have 240 West Washington, which Richard was able to restore after you granted a special use. And like all special uses, you now have the ability to inspect this annually to make sure that it is up to code and that he has the right number of students or people inside. It now houses a national sorority. The boxwood gardens, which have become overgrown and diseased, are now replanted, and the original statuary has been replaced. These are the benefits that you get from granting group use. Next, please. So the question becomes, what do you want to do with this pit? Always look at the alternatives. It's easy to say no, but what will that mean? Do you want this to remain an eyesore? Do you want it to become a parking lot? Or are you going to let Richard build a beautiful new building in its footprint with a historic aesthetic? In our application packet, we included some drafts, uh, or some pictures of some of the Milledgeville corner homes that served this inspiration from this draft. As you know, corner homes in, uh, historic towns like this are... As you know, corner homes in historic towns like this are typically grand affairs. And to put a house like this on this corner, you're not going to find someone who will build that for a single family. There is not a market for that in this neighborhood, and there hasn't been for many years. The idea isn't to create a replica of a historic home, but rather a new home that fits seamlessly into the neighborhood, and of course, like with all Mr. Sims projects in the historic district, we will get approval from the Historic Preservation Commission. Next, please. These drafts are just intended to give you a taste of the style we're looking for. Now, if you approve this overlay, we'll come back with specific building plans. At that point, you can approve them, you can reject them, or you can modify them. Next, please. The Millersville Housing Code is written to be flexible and adapt to the realities of the marketplace. Although this property is not currently in the group use overlay, Richard can request that it be put in the overlay. And in fact, he has done that on several occasions, and you have approved it. Just like with any special use approval, you need to consider the character of the neighborhood and the appropriateness of the use. This neighborhood is overwhelmingly students. That is a fact, and that is not going to change. We've talked about enforcement, we've talked about having students follow the rules, and I agree with that, Richard agrees with that. That will not change the character of this neighborhood. It is one block or two blocks from the college, you have a wealthy student population that is coming into town and is willing to spend money on homes near the college. This is what they want. And if you don't allow them a venue to do it appropriately, legally, and safely, they're going to do it anyway. So, when you shut down Richard's projects, you are tacitly approving all the people who don't come in here and ask you for permission. And when you allow these few people in the neighborhood to make Richard the target for all student behavior, you are discouraging that type of investment and encouraging the slum lords in which many of these students currently live. Perhaps the most important stakeholder in this area is the First Baptist Church, and I submit to you that those are the voices that you should be listening to, not those of the constant complainers, but those of the people who see value and integrity in Richard's work. Thank you for your time.
I read the wrong ordinance, I need to rewrite, re-read the correct ordinance.
Okay. You need to do that now? Go ahead.
Yes ma'am.
Make the correction.
So, I was telling, I read the wrong ordinance into the minutes, so I need to correct that.
Okay.
Ordinance 13.
Okay.
So, ordinance O-2011-13 reads, "An ordinance meaning the ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002, known as the Land Development Code of the City of Millersville, Georgia, ordinance grants a special use for the group residence overlay at 301 Liberty Street." Now, I think I'm correct.
You're correct, I'm right. Okay.
So, the first one was for 140 North Columbia, and this is for 301 South Liberty.
Right, okay. I'm sorry, I lost my place. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the amendment?
My name's Ike Thomas, I live at 220 Pine Needle Road, Millersville, Georgia. I'm speaking in favor of the amendment, personally and on behalf of the First Baptist Church. He owns the Tomlinson Ford House, which is directly in front of the First Baptist Church in Millersville, Georgia. We've never had any problem there with that church, with that house, the individuals in there, or their outside garbage, or whatever you'd like to call it. And I'd like for him, I'd like to see the corner lot that he's proposing or asking a waiver on today approved, because right now, it's a jungle, as you may or may not know. And I remember that house when it was there, and I knew the residents, meaning I'm personally, directly, and some of them indirectly. And anything to improve that lot in that corner would be an asset to Bowen County in Millersville, Georgia, and I believe the neighborhood, regardless of how it will be used in the future. So, we are speaking in favor of the motion. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the amendment? Okay, I will now recognize anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the amendment.
My name is John Alton, I live at 221 South Liberty Street, and over the past 27 years, I've been here several times, so I do know all of you, and I appreciate the work that you do. Before I address 301 South Liberty Street, a couple of things I have to say, and help Mr. Mollins particularly. There are complaints, but most of the complaints that come from the residents of the historic district, particularly around Liberty Street, go to our representative. Like I said, I've talked to Jeanette several times. The ones we're told to go to are the police department and the code office, and we do that. So, there are some complaints, probably not as many as there should be. I've addressed several cases of parking, and I think I would like the city council to take an active part in correcting some of the difficulties with parking. The gentleman who addressed and disagreed with the property at 140 North Columbia has a point. All of North Columbia Street from Hancock, at least up to Montgomery, is resident parking only. It has signs up. Liberty Street has signs up for resident parking. Unfortunately, his is not patrolled and not ticketed, mine is. There's a disparity, and I think we need to correct that very quickly, because residents do not like the idea of one area being treated unfairly. The two tickets offered just recently on Liberty Street, it is patrolled by the young lady regularly now, and it's fairly well cleaned up. But that's not the case with North Columbia, and I think they should take notice. Either take the signs down, change the ordinance, or start ticketing for those that do not have a permit. And according to the permit office, each house gets three. Each house gets three. So, it's just a matter of applying and getting a permit to do that. I'll get off my high horse there very quickly. The question of 301 South Liberty Street. I will not go into detail, as I have in many other cases, of the excess burden places on utilities. Water, sewage, trash, the city already has a problem in many areas with those. Traffic, absolutely, it's going to increase traffic. And right now, Liberty Street is a mess because it's a cutoff. People who do not want to use Wilkinson Street because of the light, or do not want to go to Franklin, will come all the way through the property to Liberty Street. Houses use it, ones on Wilkinson use it. Therefore, it does exacerbate the parking, the traffic problem, and this will only make it worse. Noise, the parties on weekends on Liberty Street have decreased some because some of the neighbors do complain. I think some of the students are getting the idea that there's going to be a complaint. And it has decreased on Liberty Street. It has not decreased on Washington Street. It has not decreased on Wilkinson. So, those problems still exist in that area. And the area that we're addressing right now, particularly Liberty Street and the surrounding area, is covered extensively in your ordinance of 2007. That's the key issue, one of the key issues here. The city ordinance was designed specifically for some of the areas that the city and the residents wanted to preserve. They allowed certain things to take place in one area, and that's primarily around the Montgomery area and up around Georgia College. They wanted to restrict or limit the number of multifamily use and sorority and fraternity use on Liberty Street, to Franklin, over to Clark, over to Wilkinson, and up to Green. Only partially successful has the city been in doing that. As you well know, you've approved one fraternity house on Wilkinson, you've approved one sorority house on Washington, and you have two quasi-sorority houses on Liberty Street, which have not been approved. So, we do need to take a look at some of the things we do with the ordinance. Currently, and my numbers may be one-off, but currently, on the 200 and 300 block of South Liberty Street, there are 15 houses, which includes the one at the corner of Liberty and Washington, which is a sorority house. It does not include the Baptist Church. And while I'm there, the Baptist Church have been great neighbors to the entire community, particularly to Liberty Street, in helping to assist us. But I would let you know, that's not going to be forever. I understand what the Baptist Church likes and what they agree with as far as Mr. Sims is concerned, but the Baptist Church owns property on North Columbia. They're not going to be there forever. I am. I live there, and I'm going to stay there. Of those 15 houses, 12 of them currently have students. Some basically authorized, some not authorized. And again, it's the same with what's occurring at 140 North Columbia, and that is enforcement. I guess after discussion and listening to Mr. Jordan, we as neighbors need to take a more active part in identifying these for the city so that they may take action. And I think many of my neighbors will begin to do some of that, because there are a lot of those houses on South Liberty Street that have more than three unrelated, and are still zoned, single family. And that's part of the problem. Again, I refer back to what would occur in 2007. In 2007, the city did a great favor for the city of Millersville by wanting to help protect its historic district, and taking a good part of that historic district, South Liberty Street in particular, and saying, "We do not want, would not encourage," probably will not approve a change to put in fraternities, sororities, and multifamily use in this area. If you want that to occur in order to help the students in their housing problems, we are going to give you the area north of the college and around Montgomery Street. That was our understanding, and I think the main thing here, and my main concern along with my neighbors, oh, by the way, I guess I'm a major complainer, but some of my neighbors are as bad as I am. They, unfortunately, have been intimidated by some of our neighbors, and they do not want to come before city council, voice their opinion, and feel that intimidation. That's the sad part of it, because no matter what is said by anyone, the people that live on South Liberty Street do not dislike students. We understand that students are part of our community, we just want them to be good neighbors, and that isn't always the case. I go back, 2007. I'm primary here tonight to let you know that the neighbors and the people on South Liberty Street do not agree with putting a house on that corner. Clean it up, but don't put a house on it. That's just another piece of property that causes the problems that have been identified already in the neighborhood. And primarily, it's against your ordinance. I would like to see you begin to follow your ordinance. It's got to stop somewhere. Maybe we can stop it here. Maybe we can curtail some of it so it's not all gone, because if we don't do something, that whole area will be completely lost, even more than it is now. So, I appreciate your time very much, and I'm subject to any questions you may have.
So, Carolyn, just so I'm clear, you are pro-pit? You're in favor of the pit?
I'm in favor of cleaning the property up. I'm not in favor of building a house on it.
There was a house there previously, why should there be an issue with a house there now?
Because the house there before was a house that had not only students, but non-residents, many, several of them. And that neighborhood, to include my section of Liberty Street, was all single family.
If you reside there, then how are you a non-resident?
I am a resident of South Liberty Street, 221, and have been for 27 years. I just don't want to see another house exacerbating the problem of parking, waste, noise, and all the rest that goes along with it.
So, I take it that you've done a traffic study, then? How many vehicles pass through that intersection through the neighborhood any given day?
I don't do, well, I don't do traffic studies, I just have to sit on my front porch and watch them come through and go in.
So, then your evidence is anecdotal?
My evidence is my opinion.
Doesn't sound very scientific, but I appreciate that. Always good to have someone on the neighborhood watch.
Thank you.
So, and I take it that you've also studied Millersville's ability to provide utility services? You seem to think that we are deficient in our ability to provide water and sewer services to one more house on that block. What do you base that opinion on?
You are able to provide, I suppose, adequate maybe, or maybe not, because as I ride through the city all during the year, there are water lines being replaced, there are sewer lines being replaced. We have to have an additional fee in order to have wastewater management. So, there are utility problems, the extent to which I don't know.
And if you have a, if you have a water system, then you have leaks. Do you have light bulbs in your house that you replace? If you have an electrical system, you're going to have to make replacements over time.
Light bulbs only get worse when you have to use them. So, if you continue to use utilities, you've got to replace them more often than you are now.
So, then that would make about half of your argument's furries.
It's my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other rebuttal in opposition to the amendment? Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from council?
I'd like to make a comment about something that the attorney said about people being petty and a few people complaining, because I too live in a neighborhood that's changing, has changed over the years, just like some of these neighborhoods. It's gone from a completely single-family neighborhood to a mixed neighborhood with families and college students still living there. And we had a neighbor to complain, he complained to the landlords. We've had several instances, and I'm not going to say it's just one, because we've had people to complain, and when they complain, sometimes you do get not only rebuttal from the landlords, but you also get some things that happen with the students that live there. So, to say that people are being petty, sometimes people don't want to come out and complain because of retaliation. They, the people, the students in the neighborhoods tore his mailbox down, he ends up with beer cans all over his yard when he wakes up in the morning. There's been instances, and I get out, I have to get out most mornings, and they've put beer in my mailbox and beer cans all over my yard, and walking their dogs, they, you know, I can come home from work and they'll allow the dogs to come right up to the steps where they know you've got to step up the steps to go to your house, and allow them to use the restroom right there after they found out that you've complained about something. So, you know, a lot of times, people are silent, not because they want to come out and publicly complain because of retaliation, but they complain, but you may not see it or you may not hear it. But there are things that happen to people sometimes when they do complain, especially with the young people that know that they're doing it in the night, it's anonymous, and you're not really going to see who's doing it or who's complaining. So, you know, I just wanted to address that issue, because there are things that happen to people sometimes when they do complain, and that's why you don't get more people that will come out to these public hearings to do it, because they are afraid of retaliation.
In response to that, Denise, Ms. Shinholster, I would say that the cost of a security system, a security camera, has gotten to the point that you can go
system, a security camera, has gotten to the point that you can go to any store now and pick one up for less than $30. They're very easy to use. If you have video surveillance in front of your home, I think that that is probably the greatest deterrent to this type of action. If you have video evidence of these individuals doing this action, you've got something that you can take to court. You've got something that you can take to law enforcement. Years and years ago, when I first moved into my home, I had a storage shed in the back and it was broken into over Christmas. I invested in a home security system, I have surveillance all around my property, and I haven't had any additional issues. You know, even just the threat of having a camera, functional or not, is enough in most cases to deter people from doing that type of thing.
And most people have those.
And again, horrible as they are, I think it's an easy solution. And if this sort of behavior continues, then you've got evidence. You prosecute a few of these people and that will stop.
Most people have those systems and it's a matter of getting them prosecuted. Walter, but I was just making that point on behalf of my neighbors because I saw what happened with them. And I know what happens in a lot of cases in my neighborhood too. So, I agree with you 100% and that has been suggested to them. So, I just wanted to make that point that it's not, you know, they're not petty. Being petty when they complain, sometimes they have legitimate complaints.
And I truly would like to echo a lot of that, Mr. Rossi. We're definitely not in an open court trying to debate something, but I too have to deal with that same thing in my neighborhood. And oftentimes, and I hear you, I think from what I've been told, some of these people have went to their student neighbors, talked to them, and, "Oh, we're going to do all right." But then I've seen video surveillance at 2:00 in the morning, students walking up, ringing doorbells, throwing stuff all at people's door. And when I tell you, even with my neighbors, okay, you start at 2:00 in the day, I'm like, "Okay, I'm going to let you go on throughout the night." But at 11:00 at night, I'm tired of hearing boom, boom, boom. My windows are shattering. So it's time for me to take action. You don't have a recourse other than to call the city. That's what we're here for. We're supposed to be watchful, helping our constituents out, make sure that if they have some problems, I don't think it's just these few people that are complaining, you just don't, because we get the complaints. I've sat and watched students amass, okay, totally violating the ordinances. So, you know, I just wanted to make sure we said that to you in reference to what you were saying. And as far as the church, we thank you sir, coming on First Baptist's behalf, but they're not going to do anything in the daytime and certainly ain't going to do anything on a Sunday to disrupt worship service. But when you're talking about, which we know Thursday through Sunday, Thursday through Saturday night, these people have legitimate complaints and we don't want to dismiss them by any long shot. We do appreciate, no, I do, the work I've seen that Mr. Sims does, but it comes at a cost on both sides of the fence. And so, I wanted to add that as well. And if no one else from council wants to add anything, council members, you've heard the ordinance and the presentation of evidence. Is there a motion on the amendment?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to accept the findings of the Planning and Zoning Commission and deny the request.
Madam Mayor, may I make a rebuttal?
Okay. Who wants to?
I believe we're entitled to rebuttal.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we had passed that point. Come on, come on up, Mr. Rossi.
Counsel Donnie Olson with Friar Olson, PC. As you know, I have represented Mr. Sims before, before council. It's a pleasure to be back. And I wanted to sit there, and I am sitting there listening to the statements that are being made by Colonel Alton and some of the members of council. And so I did want to come up and speak partially on behalf of Mr. Sims, partially on behalf of a business owner of a piece of property here in downtown Milledgeville, 110 South Jefferson Street for close to 20 years now. And the notion that all of these problems are students, I mean Colonel Alton constantly directs it at students.
What now?
Mayor, you were doing it yourself, directing it at students. I will tell you, virtually on Monday of every week after a weekend, I come into my office on Monday morning and there is trash on the front of my office, which is at the corner of Hancock and Jefferson. And it's not an overwhelming amount. In fact, it is very similar sometimes to the trash that you saw in some of the photos that were presented in the previous ordinance request. And it's just a fact of life that this is a downtown area, there are bars downtown. And I'll submit to council that all of the people that are littering are not students. This is not a student problem. This is a problem of people violating ordinances and littering. And I promise you, it's not always students. Because I've watched it happen. I've gone out and picked it up at my office before and it's not students that are doing it. It's unfortunately just society. And secondly, I wanted to point out an interesting fact, that Colonel Alton is adamant that he doesn't want a house built on Liberty Street in the Pitt. Well, I'll submit to council that there has been a house on that property. There hasn't been one for 10 years, but there's been a house there for longer than Colonel Alton's been alive. That was a historic home that unfortunately burned down. I'll also submit to council that it is in Baldwin County and the city of Milledgeville's interest for another house to be built there. Our tax revenue will increase, both in the county and the city if there's a house there. If you compare the tax revenue for a grown-over corner lot where a burned-out building was and a brand-new house, the city is going to benefit for years to come for the increased tax base that that will bring. I also think it makes the city safer that you don't have that hole that is there. Are there other possible uses for it? Sure, it could be a parking lot. But I suspect if I wanted to build, if Mr. Sims wanted to build a parking lot there, Colonel Alton's going to come and complain about that too. Because he wants to control what Mr. Sims puts on his property. And I think that in and of itself is very un-American for us to, I mean, we have, we respect property rights in America. And Mr. Sims is coming before council, he's asking to do it the right way. While there was an ordinance put in place in 2007, the ordinance in and of itself provides for abilities for you to come and ask council to make a change. The fact of the matter is, and I've argued this before council before, the fact of the matter is, the city of Milledgeville can put any kind of ordinance in place, but the ordinances are not going to dictate what the market dictates as to the best use of the property. And I'll submit to council, the best use of that property is not a vacant lot. And the best use for the community of that property is not a vacant lot. The best use of that property would be for something to be built on there and for it to be used. Council has the ability to regulate how that property is used, and nobody is arguing that. But if council approves the ability for him to come, Mr. Sims to come back and apply for the group overlay or the group use of that property, council has the ability to regulate the number of people that reside there, to regulate the parking in the area. Council doesn't really have that ability now, but they would have that ability if Mr. Sims has granted that. So, I think it is in the benefit, I mean, in the interest of the city of Milledgeville to consider allowing someone to come and improve the entire neighborhood from a vacant lot that is there now. Because it is an eyesore to the neighborhood. It is an eyesore to Liberty Street. I don't live on Liberty Street, but I promise you, if I did, I would want something there rather than an overgrown vacant lot. And I think that council needs to take that into consideration as well. Thank you.
But you want to come back as well, Mr. Rossi, or you're just letting Mr. Olson speak?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Does the other side have rebuttal? Can quick rebuttal?
Sure, sure, sure.
Excuse me for doing this again, but I couldn't sit still. Let me break one thing clear and I want to be sure and get it on the record. The people who live on Liberty Street, to include the old Colonel, do not dislike students. Again, we dislike behavior and those are some of the things that we have a problem with. As far as the student population, I did not blame students for stealing a 90-pound concrete eagle off my front porch. I did not blame students for stealing two chairs and a table off my front porch. I blame someone because they disappeared. And oh, by the way, I have four cameras. Cameras do not always solve the problem. Because I called the police, they took film off my cameras and they still can't prosecute because they don't know who it is. Hard to find. You know that. Very well you know that. Unless you have a facial recognition system, you can have a hard time doing any of that. So, that's something that, again, the city council has to really understand. The neighbors, all my neighbors now have cameras. It does help us keep an eye on the property, but it doesn't completely solve the problem. And again, I don't know whether students or not. I just want the person convicted, charged with stealing property, and they do. Last comment. In some cases, we have to consider, this is about community, this is about neighborhood. It isn't all about money. I know that the city likes to get revenue. Anybody likes to get revenue, to include me. But it isn't all about money. It's sometimes quality of life, sometimes it's neighborhoods, and sometimes it's what the city wants to try and preserve. And, yeah, I can deal with an empty lot. Clean it, I'm sure Richard will eventually clean up the lot. Could be green space, could be anything. But it doesn't, that street does not need another housing unit for over five, 10, eight students or any residents, whether they're students or not. I'm sorry for taking up more time. Any questions, please? Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have any more, anyone else coming for rebuttals, so at this time, I'm going to go ahead and let me say to you, Mr. Olson, please call me if you have to go pick up some trash off your porch. I'll make sure we get somebody to, so you won't have to pick it up, okay? Council members, you have heard the ordinance and the presentation of the evidence. Is there a motion on the amendment?
Once again, Mayor, I make the motion to accept the findings of the Planning and Zoning Board and deny the request.
I need a quick second. I don't need it to die, please.
Second.
Thank you. Oh, last clerk, I'll call the roll.
Mr. Chambers? I'm sorry. I didn't hear that.
You're muted.
Suppose I couldn't get my mute off.
Mr. Chambers?
Nay.
Dr. Lee?
No.
Mr. Mullins?
I think he's muted. He's muted.
You're muted, Mullins.
Can you tap into him?
He handed on mute for a second.
Mr. Mullins called.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right, so Mr. Mullins?
Nay.
Mr. Reynolds?
Nay.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I told her last name. What was that again? How many nays and ahs do we have?
Four, four nays and two ahs.
Okay. All right. This concludes our public hearing tonight and we can now...
Miss Mayor, that requires a, under our zoning ordinance, a motion to basically accept the findings of the Planning and Zoning Commission and deny the application, which is what that was. There was a vote.
A four-two.
As I understood it, there was a vote of four noes. Now, what was the vote?
Four-two.
Four-two.
Yes, four noes.
Four-two, Mr. Jordan, four-two.
Four noes and two ahs.
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, only two wanted to accept the findings of the Planning and Zoning, which was to deny.
Correct.
Under our zoning ordinance, you, if there is a motion such as that, that requires another motion to basically approve, a motion to approve the findings. I mean, not approve the findings, but approve the application because it cannot, under our zoning ordinance, and I can pull the section, it cannot, if there is a motion basically to deny the application that in effect fails, then there has to be another motion to approve the application for a vote on that motion.
Okay.
And if everybody doesn't understand that, we need to make sure we're clear.
Yes, say that again.
Say that.
Basically, the motion to deny the application has failed. And under our zoning ordinance, it requires that there be another motion to approve the application to be voted on accordingly.
If I may, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we disapprove the findings of the P&amp;Z Board and approve the application.
Second.
And so, everybody is clear, that is a motion to approve the application of this particular property owner to put this property in the overlay. So a yes is to approve, a nay is to deny.
So, we've received a motion and a second.
We've had a motion and a second.
Right, Mr. DeNewsy is about to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
No.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
No.
Ms. Walden?
No.
And that's the tie vote.
The Planning and Zoning had also denied the application as well, right? Was that the case, Mr. Jordan? Planning and Zoning had also denied the application, right?
Yes, ma'am, but the Planning and Zoning actually voted unanimously to deny that request.
I'm looking right at it. Okay, well, tonight I'm going to follow suit with Planning and Zoning and I'm going to vote no on tonight. As the tiebreaker, I think, and I guess I need to give my reasons behind this. I feel like Planning and Zoning is starting to step up to the plate and we as mayor and council need to do the same thing. I'm not sure if... I'm not sure if he'll be at a later point, be able to come back and and put his application back in, and maybe we can look at it a little differently, but tonight I'm gonna go ahead and go with the planning and zoning deny on this tonight. All right, this concludes our public hearings tonight, and we can now move on to new business. The first two items under new business are to authorize speed breakers in two neighborhoods. These resolutions are in response to residents' requests to slow and control dangerous or disruptive traffic. The residents of the neighborhoods presented us with their requests in the form of petitions. We were given a presentation on the requests by the city manager, and we have had the opportunity to discuss them in a work session. At this time, I will ask the clerk to please read Resolution R dash twenty-one oh one dash oh one by caption.
A resolution to authorize speed breakers and/or risers be placed on Turkey Run along with the appropriate signage in accordance with Section eighty-six dash six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Milledgeville, Georgia.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Don't move.
Is there any?
Second.
Echoing tonight. Is there any discussion? I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted as official. I will ask the clerk to please read Resolution R dash twenty-one oh one dash oh two by caption.
A resolution to authorize speed breakers and/or risers be placed on Reeves Circle along with the appropriate signage in accordance with Section eighty-six dash six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Milledgeville, Georgia.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Don't move.
Second. Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted as official. Next, we have resolutions to authorize agreements to lease and maintain copiers in various departments. I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R dash twenty-one oh one dash oh three by caption.
To authorize a lease agreement with Xerox Financial Services LLC and a purchasing agreement with G D P Technologies for the lease and maintenance of a copier in the city manager's office.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor? Can I ask you a question, please?
Yes, sir, I just said any discussion.
Oh, okay, thank you. Just wanted to ask the attorney this, and that is, we can adopt alcohol licenses en masse, but we can't seemingly approve Xerox copiers? And I I'm not trying to be smart about this or anything, I I, but it just seems like a lot of work has to go through for each department when when we seem to be able to do other things en masse.
Oh, I think, actually, you can do anything en masse. It's just a matter of whether you want to establish that as a practice of of this council, but clearly you can, you can do that. You can give the city manager the authority to sign all lease copies, so you can, you, there are a lot of different things that you can do to not have to vote on these individually. This came about as a result of some issues many, many moons ago, where council wanted to make sure that they were approving and reviewing every contract before it was authorized to be signed by, in this, in these cases, the mayor. But yeah, you could, you can do just like you do with the alcohol license and do an en masse approval of these lease agreements for the copiers. Absolutely.
Okay, so going forward, we might look at this in our, do that? Okay, thank you very much, very definitely. Thank you.
It's a great idea.
Clerk, please call the roll.
That's all, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm ready for the vote. Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee? Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R dash twenty-one oh one dash oh four by caption.
To authorize a lease agreement with Xerox Financial Services LLC and a purchase agreement with G D P Technologies for the lease and maintenance of a copier at Fire Station Two.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have one quick question, just to Mr. Griffith. I I noticed that you have, one, two, three, four, five copiers listed on the lease agreement. And we're only doing two.
There actually should be three on this, and then you all approved two others two, uh, two months ago.
The lease agreement lists all of them, but there's a copy of each with each green.
Correct.
Okay, so.
So it's the same, it's exactly the same lease agreement with with the copier numbers. It repeated with each.
And I guess I agree with Steve because since the lease agreement has all of them listed, I I guess I'm trying to understand the logic behind doing all of them. Why couldn't you just list all the locations on one resolution?
You could definitely do that.
Yeah, that's that's the question that I'm asking.
We we tease it apart so that council has the option to approve or deny as they see fit.
I know, but I if council were presented with the resolution that had where they're located, you know, listed on one resolution and then do it all at one time, since you have one lease agreement. That's, I guess that's what we're trying to say, that one one fine swoop would do all of it.
Well, even with an alcohol license en masse, we have the ability to be able to pull one out.
Yeah, right, right.
Separately, so I I I think, you know, there's always opportunity to be able to single out, or if we have a problem with one department or something of that nature, but I have to agree, and that's kind of where this came from. We we got one agreement with one company, with one city.
Right.
And it just, you know, I'd really like to make a motion that we go ahead and vote on the rest of these en masse, and then maybe we can set a precedent going forward. I'll make that motion now.
Second.
Can that be done that way, Mr. Jordan?
Oh, now you got, the clerk's gonna have a problem here.
Well, we got one we've already made a motion on.
Yeah.
I have a motion, so for, I have a motion and second on the floor to adopt. Do I need to disregard that motion and second now, and do another motion and second?
No, you can't disregard it.
No, 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 let's, let's, let's go with what we have tonight, if that's okay, because Mr. Griffith, uh, Mr. Chambers, I think you mentioned it one time before, and since Mr. Jordan said we can go back and change it up, let's just run on through this tonight. It's it's past the time. So we have that motion and second on the floor. Who did you have for that?
So this is a motion from Dr. Lee, a second for Ms. Walden to approve twenty-one oh one oh four for Fire Station Two.
Okay.
So ready for me to call the roll?
Yes, please call the roll.
So, Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R twenty-one oh one dash oh five by caption.
This to authorize a lease agreement with Xerox Financial Services LLC and a purchase agreement with G D P Technologies for the lease and maintenance of a copier in the accounting and purchasing departments.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? Did you get that second, Mrs.?
I think Mr. Mullins made that second. Okay. So yes, ma'am, I'm ready.
Okay. Clerk, call the roll.
Okay. Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee? Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
All right, I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R dash twenty-one oh one dash oh six by caption.
To authorize a lease agreement with Xerox Financial Services LLC and a purchasing agreement with G D P Technologies for the lease and maintenance of a copier in the Water and Sewage Department.
You've heard the resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
Move and approve.
Give me a second.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R twenty-one oh one dash oh seven by caption.
To authorize a lease agreement with Xerox Financial Services LLC and a purchasing agreement with G D P Technologies for the lease and maintenance of a copier in the Water Maintenance Department.
Move and approve.
Thank you. Give me ever second? Second, Mr. Denise. Any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
All right, there are no alcohol license applications or renewals to consider tonight, and there are no appointments to be made. And that concludes the items on the agenda. However, as we learned in the work session earlier this evening, the Federal Family's First Coronavirus Response Act allowing the city to use federally allotted funds to help cover the excessive additional payroll caused by the coronavirus ended on December thirty-first, twenty twenty. If it is the deserved counsel, we can amend the agenda to add a resolution to extend the federally funded benefits to the end of this fiscal year. The chair will entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add Resolution R twenty-one oh one dash oh eight, extending the deadline to use the paid leave entitlements as authorized by the Family's First Coronavirus Response Act. Get a motion?
Move and approve.
Second.
Dr. Lee, second it.
Got it. Have we amended the?
Yes, that's a, that's a motion to amend the agenda, yes.
Right, right, okay. Is there any discussion? I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
The agenda has been amended. I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R twenty-one oh one dash oh eight.
A resolution to extend the paid leave entitlements authorized by the Family's First Coronavirus Response Act allowing employees to use remaining emergency paid leave in the amount available to them as of December thirty-one, twenty twenty, through June thirty, twenty twenty-one.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Don't move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
The motion is adopted as official. Is there any further business to come before this body? As we prepare to adjourn, I want to say thank you all for your calls and your prayers, and Ms. Denise, who just represented me so well. I was scared I wasn't gonna have a seat when I got back. Thank you for the awesome job that you did in representing me while I was away. And thank you, guys, let's let's take twenty-one, twenty-one, I mean, twenty twenty-one by the bull horns and do the best we can for our community and make everything a little bit better, a little bit pleasant for the people of our community. With that being said, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Don't move. Second.
Meeting adjourned.